Religious allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the very honor for which it stands, the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting to order. Dan? Members Smith made it. Awesome. So, and welcome to, to Ingenza and Ellers. Nice to see you folks again.
I know.
Without the mask.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Canning. This one's for you, Alvin. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in a position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board will extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goal, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public school. Cool. This is for you to fill out. But you will. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 333 to the best of my judgment and ability. Thank you. All right, move to number four, Ingenza update.
Shall we sit over there? What we're with Becky? Yes. If we sit at that table, it would be good.
If anyone's wondering, we moved Ingenza up. Nope, they come a distance to get here, so yeah.
It's not bad, actually. We were just coming and on the, on the way prepared to a lot of our other clients. So, we enjoyed this drive quite a bit. Thanks for having us. And we appreciate you being here, and I believe somebody had already said this is the first meeting without masks. And so, it is, it is great.
And Al was present and a lot.
Yes, a full six-person board, absolutely. Well, thanks for having us. We know you have a full agenda tonight, so we won't take you long, but I thought it was important for us to get together and quickly regroup. A lot of things has happened in the past year, and we've started and stopped and started and stopped. And I think we may be at a point to discuss whether it's time to start again and revisit kind of the ideas that we were planning through over the past year and a half, or I want to say pre-pandemic. Not sure we're completely out the woods, but we're a lot further than we were a year ago. And so, what you have in front of you is really an abbreviated summary of the last year and a half. What we're describing of kind of our planning timeline. And I just wanted to quickly touch on this and then hopefully at the end, talk about next steps. Where we're really wanting to schedule another meeting to regroup and discuss a timeline for potential November 2022 election and what that looks like, given the information that we pulled together possibly almost a year ago. And so, if you look at the document in front of you, again, it's just an abbreviated timeline. Wanted to give you an idea of where we started. Luke would talk a little bit about where we are today. You executed a project, or gave us authority last year to execute a project this summer. I'll update you on that. And then, again, talk about next steps moving forward. So, we started a year ago. Came to you with that big fat binder, took a good three hours of your time, justice like this. I remember cannot forget that day. And really walked through all of your deficiencies in your building, which was quite a bit. But we focused on primarily two options. And we were looking at potentially just focusing on the immediate needs and doing a referendum. But part of that is using levy authority to kind of lessen that referendum amount. So, that's that A1 or A1A, A1B with option A2. So, we were looking at using your health and safety dollars, your payment bonding dollars, and then partnering that or coupling that with the referendum when you see those dollar amounts. And then that option B was your all-in option, which I think we all agree wasn't feasible. It's quite a large option. But again, you know, in the assessment phase, it's giving you all the data and all the information. So, as you walk through the information with your community, you're able to answer those questions. And so, after we got all that information, I think we were at a point where COVID was really hitting districts in the state pretty hard. And so, we decided to take a three-phase approach. I think the district was in a situation, you were near statutory operating debt. You had debt expiring. We wanted to make sure that that didn't drop off. And so, we decided at that time, around August of 2020, to take that three-phase approach. You did some debt refunding and restructuring. Ellers will kind of debrief you on a recap a little bit for you. Decided on a smaller project to keep those taxes leveled with the exception of that 5% drop. And you see with those options, you had A, B, and C. B was the option that you selected. Luke will talk a little bit about that. There was some scope changes, but right around that, that number with some pretty significant budget underage. And then use the rest of the time to plan for a referendum. And so, we looked again and starting that planning process again and then decided in March that hey, we probably need to put the brakes on it and regroup at the end of school year to see how best to move forward. And then number four on that back page is that immediate need, project execution. Where we want to focus most of our time today is to update you on where you are there and really talk about the next steps. So, any questions on the timeline? Does that sound about right, Kathy? I think we kind of worked through that over the past year. So, if it's okay, I'll let Luke shift to giving you an update on where we are with that current project. And then Ellers would give you kind of a recap of what was done last year with the restructuring and the refunding. So, we're all on the same page of where we're starting from now.
All right, I got a handout. I apologize. It printed off the way that I can't stand turning two-sided printing, but it's all there. Just a real quick recap of what was done or what we're doing now or just started doing. So, we kind of de-sculpted or we selected portions of the building that we could probably, you know, that we could feel we could get within that 5.6 million range or so. And that was really concentrating on the classroom side of the building. So, that includes all those general classrooms and media center for the most part. That's where the most of the work is going, along with the dust collector in the woodshop. That's all been ripped out. About half of the new ductwork is put up in there. They're able to get a little bit quicker start on that section. And then the makeup air unit for the kitchen is going to be replaced as well as part of the pocket. But compared to the classroom, anything a little smaller piece bit. So, those are the sections that got selected in for design and for bid. Flipping, kind of the construction timelines. We did get in, in May, started doing some of the demo in the woodshop, some of the boiler plant. Once that was shut down, getting sort of the pumps and piping, they're going halfway, halfway done in there. Electrically, they're probably about 60, probably about 70 to 80% today as far as the demo goes. Couple of hiccups there, well, at least one. They ripped out a panel and it kind of annoyingly, it was supporting a couple of other areas. Kind of odd, I see there's a few odd things as far as how the building is wired. A little different than you typically would see, but they were able to get that back up in, I think it was about a day and a half. Melrose Electric worked pretty hard to be able to get that back up and going. And that new panel, that kind of a permanent panel there will be slated to go in next week. So, that'll be done and not an issue there. The demo is ongoing right now, actually the focus right now. The great majority of the demolition would be done yet this week. Once the mezzanine area is cleaned out, so to speak, McDell will start working on taking out some of the pieces of equipment that are in each classroom. If you're the term VAB box, so variable airborne box. Those are going to start coming out. And when they do that, KMS is the duct cleaning contractor. They're mobilizing this week, so they'll be here for like three to four weeks. They'll be cleaning all the ductwork on that end of the building and then encapsulating the existing internal insulation models. And as soon as that's done, like next week, we're expecting new equipment to begin to be installed. So, as soon as they're ripping out those PAB boxes, get things cleaned up, they'll start working through classrooms and getting the new boxes in. They're scheduled to be delivered end of this week, early next week. And as soon as they have those, they're, they're ready to go. Major pieces of equipment are the air handling equipment is slated to be shipped end of this month for early July. That is just before the Fourth of July delivery. They say that, we wouldn't, we usually put a little bit of slippage time into that. So, we would expect, it'd be awesome if they showed up at that point. But we, we built it into the schedule that maybe a week or two later. Still plenty of time to get things in. Which is a good place to be in a lot of projects, kind of that after us are sweating. If stuff is going to show up on time and it's really kind of slamming stuff in in the latter part of August, which is not, you know, not a difficult for school projects. But I think we really got ahead of the game as far as the bid line and able to get things queued up and to the manufacturers quicker than most of the projects out there. Electrical service, we're still planning on kind of that when the building is shut down. Indicating right now that it likely, but we do not have a ship date yet on that. They haven't felt comfortable enough to say yes, it's going to be here at this, this time. That's probably the biggest thing, so we can't guarantee that it'll be there without knowing that. Everybody's saying, oh, yep, it should be. We've heard that before. Or, you know, we'll do everything we can to get it done within that timeframe. If it doesn't, you know, during the week, we'd be working with the approximately a three-day shutdown or so while they take that down and get the new equipment in. So, they have some, some of the equipment, but they need all the pieces to be able to do the work. And everything else be ongoing then through July, whether new equipment going in with substantial completion, August 20th is the contract date. That's the date that we'd be able to get, start getting some teachers back into some rooms. And as soon as we get things done, we'll kind of work our way down a corridor around the building. When those are, are complete, we'll get them cleaned up. Be able to probably handle for, you know, a lot of those as, as we go, it's not going to be dealt just at once. So, we're coordinating with Paul as far as the final cleaning. Rooms are tarp'd, so we don't expect a huge amount of cleaning to be done. The scope that's, that's being executed in the classrooms isn't super messy. It's going to work with just that one piece of equipment. We're not tearing down all the ceilings and all the spaces. So, we envision a little smoother transition back to the district through those spaces to be able to get them ready for, for school. We didn't talk about final cleaning would be by district and that, you know, we put a budget in there for it. We can do it either way. If there's budget there, we can hire somebody in. You know, we've kind of talked about that, make a decision usually in July on that. Because they, they do typically fill up trying to get those people in. But again, we're not expecting a huge amount of final cleaning. Maybe, you know, other than maybe in where your offices worry under that, that space. That's getting kind of more or less, you know, kind of completely tore apart. Ceilings will be coming out this week in that area and a few classrooms where we had a little more ductwork that we're, we're working on. Completion for occupancy, so you'll see a little difference there. We can start getting some people in, moving in some spaces a little bit. But as far as like, you know, the official, official occupancy, we'd be scheduling that, but it's September 3rd. Kind of in late, still working with the, with the local inspector, state inspector on that to get our... We never really lose the certificate of occupancy, but getting that blessing again to be able to fully occupy the building, have kids in, you know, so it's open to the public. That, I mean, you're safe, it's good to go, and then school starts September 7th. And then there will be balancing and commissioning done kind of after that date. You know, after the 20th of August, we'll start some of the balancing in some of the rooms. But we do need to get in and see things running, like the de-communication system running and checking that out. So, we'll be working on that all the way through or kind of waiting until the spring of 2022 until we get good warrant days. We may get that this fall, may be able to do that, but we typically don't. So, we'll plan on, you know, we'll be back or be here for that whole, working on a couple. You know, there'll be a few kinks here and there typically, but we'll be around them through the fall, winter, and spring to manage any of those items. And then, so the total project flows out then, do like an 11-month walkthrough next summer, warranty walkthrough on things. If there's anything that isn't working, we list it and then make sure we get that covered while we're underneath that installation. Kind of 12-month warranty period before the, kind of the real warranty starts, so to speak. So, we try to lengthen that, that piece. Any questions on where we're at right now? To date, things are, dates are looking good and running pretty smooth. And I'll briefly go over kind of budget update, where things are at. So, you can see the top piece there, kind of the original funds available, kind of adding up the contingency and the project budget to that $5.6 million figure. When we opened up, we were pleasantly surprised and substantially below that amount due to a number of reasons. We re-sculpted some pieces. Through design, we found a couple of different pathways for the piping up on the roof to help save us a substantial amount of structural work that didn't have to be done or added to the existing structure. We had to make a couple of additional jobs, but overall it probably saved us, you know, $300,000, $400,000 of work inside that we didn't have to do. As well as the other big piece there was the energy recovery piece. Throughout the design process, we had a bunch of meetings and we can kind of talk about those. We saved a substantial amount of money. We meet energy code, we're well under an energy code piece. But it had a cascading effect as far as we didn't have to touch some, again, structural in the floors of the, of the mezzanine, some additional ductwork, tearing open the roof to get stuff, equipment in. We were able to go through existing movers, so kind of a cascading factor. And then the bid climate at the time was, was phenomenal. We got great numbers and there are a number of projects that went even a few weeks, a month later that were doing, were being over budgeted. So, we were, we were fortunate, we, we hit it just right, you know, it just, it just happened that way. I'd love to take credit for it, but it just, that's just the way it worked and we're happy that it did. Project costs to date, then you'll see a couple of lines there, the additional district projects. We'll get a little bit more definitionally of what's in there. That was primarily because we got the underage, that's, the most of that is the lift station repairs or budget to be able to take care of that or the flooring, getting the wiring back over to that. Change orders to date, the majority of those are, you know, some planner view items. They had to move the dust collector system 10 feet away from the door essentially on that one. Lots of time is let go, but this time they wanted to move it over. So, there's, there's some money in there for some landscaping to try to move it over and get in, into the little, go on the opposite side of where we showed it. As well as they're pulling some additional wiring for the, between the generator and the new transfer switch. And kind of taking care of some of that low area there, making sure it makes high, kind of getting it, doing it right essentially on that piece. There's some additional costs associated with doing that, but getting things set up for the future. And then a budget reserved for district direct expenses. So, we had a budget in there for items like special inspections, which are direct to that contractor. Things like concrete testing, well, you know, looking at welds, you know, cold tensions, that kind of those types of things. As well as printing, insurance, you know, legal fees, and there's one more in there. But it's, we'll, we'll very likely become, you know, be under that $48,000. I'm just holding it kind of top of the line right now because there's items in there. We don't know what the costs are going to be. We had final cleaning is included in their budget for it as well. So, it kind of has me that we see what those actual costs are going to be, then we can kind of take some of those dollars that we feel confident we're going to be under and move that in the bottom of the remaining funds to date. So, I don't anticipate us again using all those contingency funds. We're seeing about $190,000 in contingency funds remaining there. There'll be a couple of things that pop up, is my guess, that we'll have to take care of. But I don't see us using the lion's share of that. And the contract allowance funds, those we would typically use first. Those are, that's, those are dollar amounts that are already in the contracts with the contractors. They would typically use those first because they're, they're already in, in their contract. If we don't end up using it, that's money that, that we write a deep-dump change order and that money stays with the district at the end of project. So, all in all then, I would, you know, today while looking at where we're at, I would, I would assume we have about somewhere around $1.75 million after construction is complete left in the budget to potentially do some, some more work if you want to do. Any questions on the budget? It's easier to talk about it when there's money left.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And yeah, and that's the piece that we really need to spend some time talking about too. Not today, because we know you have a full agenda, but again, hopefully we can regroup so we can start discussing some of the next steps on moving forward. But before we quickly go through the next step, I wanted Ellers to kind of refresh you on what was done with your finance piece. And as we move forward, we'll be looking at both operating and then facilities are put on. And as Greg is passing out some literature, Mr. Chair, may I share what parts of the building we are using at this time?
Absolutely.
Okay, we are using the pool area, so we have complete swimming lessons going from early morning until about 8:00 at night. We're using the auditorium for our elementary, our elementary summer school program. We're, and that's because of course, those are the, it's, it's air-conditioned. We're also using the commons area, different sections of it for ESY for the summer school programming. A little bit for Target Services, of course, for all the meals for the, for the students, breakfast and lunch bowl. And we're using this boardroom. So, you can see over in this corner, we have Little's materials because in the morning, first thing, it's being used for the ECSE, so our EC, yes, ECSE are really young, young learners. Come in here and use the boardroom. And then as soon as this week is done, then it's going to be taken over by our preschool program. And this is new funding that's been offered through, through the governor. And so, we will be having an elementary, excuse me, a preschool program that will be working the opposite weeks of the ESY ECSE program. So, and the, the one slight issue was, oh, in the band room. The band room is being used for our credit recovery area. And Mr. Sandek's room at the end of Fifth Hallie is Sixth Hallie is being used for Target Services for our middle-class students coming in for summer school. And the one issue that had occurred was we ended up not having air conditioning in the band room and in our office complex. And so, it, we needed to have it in the band room because there were 17 students, I believe, in here for credit recovery. And, and of course, you have to have air-flowing ventilation in order for the program to, to be offered. So, as, as Luke had already shared, Melrose Electric was right on it. Realized that there was some issues with how things were coded or, you know, actually shown for the wiring. And within that day and a half, two days, we did have the air conditioning up and running again. So, everything is good. And of course, we're using our kitchen. Today, there might still be staff there. This is their long day. They start at 6:00 in the morning. And I believe last Monday, it was about 8:00 at night that they finished up. This is when they're packing all of those meals that are being offered for both our Ogalbey community and Laura community, different programs inside of Kanabik County. And then tomorrow is the distribution date where people come and actually pick up all of that food. So, kitchen's being used on two days, for sure, two days a week. And then of course, meals for all of the kids that are here for our summer program. Thank you. Okay, so the document we handed out now is one of the pages that was included in the sale day report. So, if you remember when we got the sale results last October, we were very excited about the results. There were two components to that bond issue. So, one was to finance the projects that Luke just described. And we were expecting an interest rate of about 2.46 on those bonds, and we got a 1.84. So, the final levy was adjusted down to reflect that decrease in the interest rate as compared to our estimates. And you'll see on the schedule here that the 2020 bar there, the district used some of its maximum effort loan aid to keep that tax rate down for taxes payable in 2020. So, that's the first bar with kind of the cash shading there. And then the goal was to have that tax impact go down overall with all of these by 5%. So, you can see that this is the component of the taxes that relates to that bond issue for the interair quality projects. The other component of the bond issue was refunding of your 2020, about the 2018 bonds, right? Yeah, the facility maintenance, the projects, yeah, 18, for, for maintenance projects. And we were able to, we were hoping for savings of about $105,000. We actually got savings of about $160,000. So, your levy was also adjusted to reflect that. So, we will show you now the final, the final levies for taxes payable in '20 compared to '21. It connects, and you've seen this format from us before, but it just includes all the different categories and values of property. So, you can see that ultimately, once we got all of the final data from the county on values and the final levies then from MDE, how the taxes turned out for the different types of values of properties. So, Greg can do more than just hand things out, so if you want to...
Just a pretty face.
That's why I thought you were wrong.
Yeah, so, but so basically, we took the final values from the town and incorporated where the levy ended up after all the kind of last-minute changes. So, that you can see the very bottom, the reduction of about 4% instead of 5%. That's because there was another part of your levy that went up because of some adjustments that are really out of control. And that's some of the levy that does get paid by the cabins and the, and the egg land. That dampened that effect a little bit at the very bottom. But on a dollar amount, you can see that $8 reduction at 4% would have been $10 reduction a year at 5%. So, really, it's, you know, right on where you guys want it to be. And then obviously, you know, with the, with the city hall wreck, seeing the benefit of the debt reduction and not having to pay on some of those reference value levies, their decreases were even larger. So, the big reductions were in debt, and then there was some, there was a couple of smaller increases. And we tried to, as we were doing that final debt structuring, to incorporate everything in your levy. But of course, valuations and some of those things were still petted them. But, you know, this was your goal and you basically hit your goal, so that was a nice result for your taxpayers. And then relative to the original terms that you already passed out, then the goal was a nice level debt structure because you think about future needs, you have a nice platform to develop for you.
Yeah, with the inclusion, I should have mentioned that we have the OPEC debt, of course, your existing bonds that are still outstanding included on that chart too, so you probably noticed that when...
Those are the orange bars. So, the payments on the, on the new bonds are a little smaller until, until the orange bars disappear, then they go up. So, we're doing kind of a full picture of the debt, keeping that flat all the time. Pretty difficult for your taxpayers. So, if you look at that, the, you know, we're in '21 now, you said that, like in '22, you had to pull him this year to add a bond or something to, to increase that. So, the first year that that would go on would be in... So the first year that that would go on would be in twenty twenty-three, taxes payable. So there's a couple of years for sure, the taxes are staying low. And then you'll have these discussions of where you want to go next. So that would be the first time you'd see something increasing. Okay, well, thank you.
And then, uh, just real quickly, uh, to close out, I guess, um, the next step would be decide if you want to move forward, um, with the bond collection next year for operating and then the tackle of some of these other facility needs. Um, but prior to that, uh, you have under eight dollars, uh, from the existing project that we probably should regroup and kind of discuss how we want to spend those, um, if we would forward here. And so that's what we would be looking for from you, um, to decide here in the next week or two. Any questions, someone?
Mr. Chair, we have been having some discussions, um, with our weekly, bi-week, bi-monthly meetings. And, um, Jody, could you possibly, um, review for us, what are some of the options with this underage right now? Um, what options do we have other than basically giving it back to the taxpayers all at one time?
So you can, um, spend the money on similar type projects. So I think, um, Luke was, um, kind of taking a look at what other projects that meet the indoor air quality type definition. So that's something that you can still do, that's probably the easiest option really. Um, and then, um, the other option is to, uh, if you aren't going to use the funds for additional projects, then you're required to transfer that back to your debt service fund. And that gets a little tricky because that is part of that debt service excess calculation then, that the M D E, um, computes on your behalf and it's never really been a problem for you guys because you always had the opportunity to do the one-day bonds and now you don't anymore. So that debt excess, we would want to monitor just to make sure that it wouldn't all hit your taxes in one year. So we would need to work with M D E to try to level that out over a certain period of time because otherwise you're going to have a huge reduction and then your taxes will go back up and nobody likes to see that happen. So, um, if we have bond authority, could we do one-day bonds with some of that money? If we have already elected bond authority?
I, if you get into the debt service fund, you could issue a one-day bond if you have the authority and then those funds could be spent.
I have to look, we have a, see how many is left from the last, over, I don't know all the elections, right?
Two years, you know, which are kind of long, so at four and a half. It's three.
Yeah, but we've been building authority, I don't know where it at exactly, no, but we may have some authority, but.
We could have a spreadsheet if you could just kind of update it over the last couple of years.
Yeah, yeah, we should definitely look at that. I believe it was two thousand nineteen when our last, um, bond election, that was passed, yes. We usually have those a day or a. It might have been August for that one. We had, I think we had one in December and one in August, one in eighteen and another in nineteen, but we can look that up too. Um, and so, could we then go back to our big finders and, and then look at those health and safety projects that were not selected up to this point and start to look at those to see if there are possibilities that we could add in for this underage budget?
Absolutely, yes, there's, yeah, there's a, you can pick any of the kind of areas that have been sectioned out, ready gyms, the commons, um, those areas, absolutely.
And the beauty of that is that if you decide to go out for a bond referendum, that just lessens that dollar amount even more. And so it's kind of the goal is to go out with the, to, with the least amount of money as possible to the borrowers.
And if it doesn't fit into the health and safety, um, Luke, was that where we would need to, um, go through a review and comment? And isn't there an August date that we'd have to have, you know, if we're going to be doing something that, that deviates from the health and safety projects that we're working on, then we would have to go through a new process?
Or, or if, if they're for a, for a referendum, yes. For these dollars, I would, I would plan on just covering all the bases if, if the board wants to go that way. I would submit the same type of documentation that we did for the, the existing plan, which was like the seven A and B reports, they're called, where you just, this, we just show what the, the capacity of, of things are, going to prove that it doesn't need to, and this is what we would do. So pretty easy to put together.
Yeah, so when you're using levy authority, it's a different type of process, or narratives that you have to provide when you go out for a bond election and you need to do a review and comment. And for a twenty twenty-two election, that date is August tenth. So you have to submit that review and comment by August tenth. And if we start a planning process, we will be back into that date. And so all the community engagement, all the task force meetings, anything that we have to do to, to build a project, we will get done between now and that probably mid-July date so that we would have time to put that, review and comment together and get that to the state.
Cool. Well, what I'm seeing, there's a lot of unanswered questions yet for us to, I mean, in short term, by next week, you really want us to say, yes, we're committing, but.
No.
But, no?
You take it all the time you need to decide whether you want to go for a referendum or not. I think what we would like to know is how you want to use those underage dollars. So if you want to use those dollars for additional ventilation work, indoor air quality work, we would like to start pulling that information together, getting that documentation together again, uh, because we, again, want to get early in that bid line and, and get those good numbers. As far as the referendum planning is concerned, you get to decide when you want to start planning, the more time the better. Especially, um, if you have a community that most communities don't want their taxes to go up and depending on how complex the project is, you want that time to work with the community, to work with each other, uh, to, to really get a community-supported plan so that when you go to the polls, if you go to the polls November twenty twenty-two, it's a slam dunk. So the more time, the better. But it's up to you when you want to start that process, just knowing that we would need to have a review and comment by August tenth of next year, not this year.
Oh, okay. Thanks for clarifying that. It's like, uh, we're going to be, there's a.
Oh, I turned you guys red really fast. August tenth, twenty twenty-two, so August tenth, twenty twenty-two for November twenty twenty-two.
Holy cow, you have a lot of questions for August tenth, man.
No, we would not give the green light for, we would say, no, you can't.
I feel a lot better.
Yeah.
All right.
So kind of two things there. It's underage dollars and then start the process for planning. And if we start even in August, it gives us a nice ten, eleven month planning period, uh, which I think would be good to get the community engaged.
And the only reason I was asking those type of, um, specific, specific questions is that, um, and I know that our bond and our levy, nothing can work for our roof right now, um, at this point. And you see, that's what's being brought to my office, um, every other week, um, as we have, um, the tech pointing, um, firms coming out and looking at what needs to be done on the outside of the building and sharing with us that if we do not do something in the fourth hallway, that last section of the roof soon, then it's going to have such significant damage that it's going to really cost us a lot of money because that whole west side of the building is getting water in between the, um, the, the actual, um, and it's not really brick, but between the brick and the, and the building. So we are going to have to do something. And now because we had to hold off on the bond election, so instead of being able to go for a two thousand twenty-one election where we could, you know, ask our, our voters to, um, our taxpayers to please help us with repairing that last section of the roof, um, now it's extended another year and then of course, it's another year before that actually, you know, becomes, comes to fruition. So, um, so we, we can have some, some, we have to be really smart with our money and make sure that we can do as much as possible with the, with the health and safety funding that we do have through this, um, through our bond right now and then to look at how we go out to, um, for, for an election. Um, and as soon as possible, um, and so there, yeah, there, there will be much discussion by our, our board and through, you know, through your guidance as well, elders and, and Jensen. So thank you very much for being on board with us.
Thanks for having us. And, um, I would say that, um, November is also the soonest you can go because I think the plan is to couple that with operating levy. And you can only go out for operating levies in the fall, so November launches, unless you do a mail ballot, which is a nightmare.
But we're up for it, right, everybody? We got one thing on our plate, we can do this.
So we just, again, wanted to kind of refresh you, didn't want to re-sticker shock you, uh, but just kind of give you an idea of where we've been and looking forward to moving forward. So thanks.
And you're good to see.
Thank you very much for all of coming to meet me from this up to sleep.
Luke abandoned me over here.
Thought they were going to move on.
Well, thank you very much. All right, we will push ahead to number five, like to get a motion to, uh, accept the agenda. Casey, do I, do we, do we have a second? Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Finally, I have no, I can say those who favors, say aye. Those are both. Motion passed. The sixth, open forum. We all, we all got that letter, right? Are we going to read it? Are you going to read it, right?
Mr. Chair, um, are you talking about the letter that, um, that was, that Alicia was supposed to please read at open forum?
Yes.
Okay. I will read this for us just because it does ask that it be read at the next open forum, which is tonight. Um, dear school board members, I have some concerns as a parent and teacher about next year's plan for our incoming fifth graders. I hear the plan is to combine them into one section again. I am concerned for a couple of reasons. This class contains many students with high academic reading needs. Out of our thirty-two fourth grade students, twenty of them qualify this year for Title One support because their N W E A reading scores fell below the benchmark. Sixteen students qualify for the Title One program in the area of Na. This group has shown a lot of growth this year, but I fear that combining this group into one section again as they were in third grade would seriously jeopardize their academic growth and achievement. Many parents choose to send their child to our wonderful Ogilvy School because of the small class sizes and the individualized attention instruction they receive. I truly believe this is an important time for our district to prove that we care enough about our students to keep the small class sizes as well as the individualized academic support we currently offer. I appreciate your time and consideration in the best interest of our Ogilvy students. And this is from Jennifer Dross, our Title One intervention teacher here at Ogilvy Public Schools.
Okay, so we have a second one?
And I have a second one, um, that was shared, um, and it's also about fifth grade. And this one was just addressed to, um, at least what I have in front of me is to Kathy and Alicia. I just wanted to share concerns I have for next year's fifth grade Kristen's class. One of them is the possibility of there only being one fifth grade section. I think that is too big of a class size for one classroom and one teacher. I want the kids to have quality instruction time and a relationship with a teacher who does not have to spend all of their time, uh, all of their time managing. It would not be fair to anyone to pack them in, so to speak. I am also hoping the solution will not be to add a para in lieu of another fifth grade teacher. We have some great paras, but our students need to be taught by trained teachers. The plans to compartmentalize or switch for subjects also has me concerned if it was happening all day long. I think that there is more than ten, I think there is more than ten, eleven-year-olds are ready for it, that is more. It is hard to build a classroom community when there are constantly, um, when they are constantly on the go from one run to the next with no sense of belonging. Many of these kids have instability at home, school should be a place of consistency. A similar model of fifth grade being included, middle level was attempted several years ago, um, when her son Nathan was in fifth grade, it did not work out well. The students just were not ready for it. It only lasted that year because it was too much too soon for that age group. Now I feel the same thing could happen again to these fifth graders. I support sixth grade coming back as part of the elementary, but I do not want it to be at the expense of fifth grade. They still need the consistency of having a traditional classroom teacher, one that is not spent, spread too thin throughout their day. I know I am not alone with my concerns, but I also know that you will work hard to plan what you think is best for our kids. Thank you for listening. Kathy Ambrose, first grade teacher here at Ogilvy Elementary.
I, I, I did get that one.
Yep.
Was that meant for open forum? I mean, you know, I, I don't want to have open forum, you start reading the letters even Alicia gets, because I really, you know, I mean, that's probably a lot. And I don't, we need to, you know, so I, I guess from now on, unless it's written to the board, open forum.
Okay.
You know, I, I guess they would have to make that distinction.
All right.
All right. Any other for open forum? We'll go to number seven for, for budget update, revisions of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, um, these are pretty much things that have already happened or new grants that we've received since the last budget updates. There's a couple of items that are different, but I'll just run through them real quickly. Um, number one and two are just very minor adjustments to bring the amounts up to the actual for the revenues. Number three is the new S R grant, S R two grant, which we didn't have at the time of the last update. Um, the total grant is a four hundred thirty-six, eight, twenty-three, fifty-one, and we are estimating this fiscal year twenty twenty-one to spend two hundred three thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine, oh, four. Some of the major things we're spending that on are like the choir risers, the extra transportation and extra food service workers. Item number four is increasing the Lions Club revenue because we received more revenue from them than we had anticipated. Item number five is increasing preschool tuition revenues by the actual we have received to date. Item number six is increasing E C F E fundraisers. They, they have this script fundraiser, you probably have been informed of that, well, they did it twice this year, so they had a lot of extra revenue and extra expenses to pay for the, the items, so we had to increase both the revenue and the expenditure budgets. Um, item number seven is to increase our donations account and we are increasing it for the ten thousand dollar donation from Ms. Weiss and the Make Christmas Special donation and the E C E backpack donation. So that was one fourteen thousand, two hundred in additional donations to the district. Number eight is increasing the revenue to the summer food service program and the main reason for this is because of using the summer food program all year instead of just in the summer. Item number nine is the revenue for a new F F A grant for raising chickens, the Living to Serve Grant, which we didn't have before, this is a new grant. Item number ten, this one is an entry that the auditors make, and when I initially budgeted it, I based it on fiscal year nineteen. And I think that was the first time the auditors made the entry, so when I look back at what they did in fiscal year twenty, I realized that it was significantly less. So I'm lowering this to be more of what they did last year. But I really can't explain how they come up with the number, it's not something that I do, they calculate it, so hopefully it's going to. I do, they calculate it, so hopefully it's gonna be a lot closer at this lower number. Item number eleven is a new grant for the summer preschool program that we just got in the last couple of weeks. And item number twelve is two new grants, the Summer Field Trip and Mental Health Grant and the Extended Summer Learning Grant. This Extended Summer Learning Grant is K through twelve, where the previous one was pre, pre-K. So that does it for the revenues, the changes in expenditures. Item number one is revising the budget, we had an estimated budget of how we're gonna spend the funds of the COVID relief grant, and this is now revising it to how they were actually spent. Item number two is the gear grant, and same thing, it's just revising the budget to what was actually done versus what the estimate was in the beginning. Item number three is the S R two grant, which was not previously budgeted, so this is our estimate of how it's going to be spent. Item number four is just correcting a code change, which is a code, um, that M D E they started using, the last three digits, the three-ten, they started using it for something different, so we had to change what we were using when we paid board per diem. Item number five is increasing the budget for superintendent's pay, and the reason is because of the contract being settled after the end of the previous fiscal year, so there was back pay paid, and this is to revise the budget to accommodate that back pay. Item number six, again, the summer food program, because the decision was made by the state to use the summer food program all year long, we didn't have enough money in the budgets to purchase all of our expenses through the summer program, so this is increasing those expenditures. Item number seven is increasing the expenses with the Lions Club donations. Item number eight, nine, ten, and eleven are revising the LTFM expenditures to actuals. Item number twelve is increasing the budget in there for the fees for the LRS services for our bond money that's invested through TDA Ameritrade, and then LRS oversees that account, so there are fees, monthly fees for that. Item number thirteen is scholarship payments paid out to students, and there just wasn't enough budgeted, we had more scholarships paid out, and this is the, they're kind of asked for scholarships, like East Central Energy, we had Federated, so it's dollars that are given to us to pay out to the students, so when the students turn in the proper paperwork, then we pay them off, and there just was more paid out than I anticipated. Item number fourteen is, again, the script fundraisers through ECFE, there was more expenses because of the second fundraiser. Item number fifteen is just a code correction, you can see the last three digits in each of those codes, um, are different, so we had to make sure that it was coded where it was budgeted. Item number, I believe sixteen and seventeen are both, um, errors that I made on the last budget revision, so these are just corrections to those. I, we had some coding errors in payroll that I didn't catch when I was going through the budget revisions the first time, so this is to correct that. Item number eighteen is code changes in Title Four, um, because of how the funds were used, and we found out kind of late that we were able to use some of the funds differently, and because of COVID, we didn't have the activities going on that were intended to use the money for. So some of it is like, um, certain field trips are able to be coded to these ones, and that's why the budget had to be revised. Number nineteen, this is a new budget for Student of the Quarter Breakfast, was not previously budgeted. Number twenty is the expenditure part of the Living to Serve Program, the FFA grant. We saw that on the revenue side. Number twenty-one is adding a budget for the transportation or for the, in the transportation for the insurance for the new propane bus. Number twenty-two is, this is the opposite side, the expenditure side of the pension budget that I was explaining as an auditor entry, and that's just changing it to be more of what I'm, I'm thinking that it's gonna be compared to how I had originally budgeted it. Number twenty-three is the pre-K, pre-K summer school program. This was Trisha's estimate of how much she's going to be spending in June, because, you know, the summer overlaps two fiscal years, we have to have a budget in here for June. And the same thing with number twenty-four, it's the other two new grants, the Summer Field Trip Mental Health Grant and the Extended Summer Learning Grant. This is just my best guess of what they're going to use in the month of June. And you see that there's X's in there on these last two, and that's because we don't know the codes yet, we don't know exactly what they're gonna be doing, so, but we had to make sure that they're in the budget. So if you look at the last page, the total expenditures budgeted will be one million, five hundred twenty, no, fifteen million, two thirty-eight thousand, eight oh nine and twenty cents, and revenues is fourteen million, eight ninety-eight, eight hundred eighty-seven and ninety-four cents. So we are budgeted to overspend our revenues by three hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine twenty-one, twenty-six. But as, as happened in the past several years, we have underspent, so I'm hoping that that's going to be true this year as well.
I got a question, what, can you guys help me? Work left, my memory, um, you had talked about the pool at one point in time of like, I kinda looked like not doing kind of repairs anymore or anything on it, am I wrong on that?
No, you're right. The thing we were talking about was not redoing, um, um, some of that ventilation piece in there, so we didn't wanna basically improve the space if we didn't know what we could do with it, you know? And as far as that boiled in last year, you kinda had to do that. So, I mean, I think it just has to get figured out what's gonna be the plan with it, right?
I thought we were gonna, I don't, and I, like I said, I, I thought we were gonna quit doing anything on it until we figured it out. That's just what happened, but, I don't mean I remember it right.
Maybe I missed it, but what, what was shown tonight that we did with the pool?
I just saw some, I mean, it was just smaller stuff, but there is real repair stuff on here.
Sorry, from the LTFM, it's the, it's the baffles, it's the coils.
Well, the filter is kind of the big repair they've got going on, they had to replace the sand in the pool filter.
And that's just, that has to be done every ten years, that's just common maintenance, and that's, if you look in the fourth hallway, you'll see two pallets of sand, sandbags that have to be put into the, but yes, every ten years that needs to be.
Bunch of crap in the fourth, fourth hallway also, if you brought it up, but anyway.
Sorry, are you talking about the repairs for that?
Fourth hallway, I mean, the north hall.
Well, where's, where's the sand thing?
That's, um, it's not damaged, I mean, it's not permanently damaged, and that hallway needs to be stripped completely down, and so I've already asked about that myself, so we're, we're good, we're good on that.
All right, anyway, we don't need to talk about it, I just, I mean, at some point in time, I think we need to talk about it.
We need to have that stuff.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna do something with it, we need to quit spending money on it, or if we're gonna keep it, then, then we'll keep spending money on it, but we need to figure it out at some point in time, so. All right, I guess that's all I had, Lori, thank you. Anyone else have anything?
We do need an approval of the updates.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You are, my apologies. If someone would like to make a motion to, uh, accept the board or budget update revisions for 2020 and 2021, that'd be great.
So move.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
All right, any more discussion on that? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passed. All right. Move ahead to number eight, personnel. You know, someone wants to make a motion and read. All A through D, I'm fine taking them all at once unless anyone else wants to, uh, separate them. Well, if someone would like to make that motion, then? We have a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All right, those in favor to accept personnel, A through D, say aye. Those opposed? Motion passed. All right. Number nine, new district physician, fifth grade elementary teacher effective 2021 to 2022 school year. Would you like to talk about that first? Or are we not gonna talk about it, I'm, I'm fine with not talking about it, I mean?
Well, what I would share is, that was one of the reasons I shared the other information that had come forward, because I thought you would want to, um, hear what's been shared with administration and yourselves, as well as any phone calls that you have every season, and I do believe there have been phone calls because some of you as board members have, you know, made me aware of that. I will share that, that we, we did as an administration team, we had a very good plan to put into place with, um, with having just one fifth grade teacher and two sixth, so, um, the initial asking for the one sixth grade teacher, and that's what was approved early on, um, that is, that still was, um, being done with fidelity. It was because of the numbers of students, when we added the fifth and sixth grade together, we were at either sixty-nine or seventy students. When you divide that by three, class sizes were then about twenty-four. This is all part of that, that very important plan of having our students, um, transitioning up into the middle level and into high school. And we did have a fifth, sixth grade team a few years ago that was absolutely excellent, and, and that's what we were trying to achieve here, and then also have that transition with having a, a present middle level high school teacher that would actually be a part of that fifth, sixth grade team, that, that is going to stay in place. The idea of, um, not compartmentalizing completely, but having teachers, um, focus in one discipline area will really help the instruction of our students, and in, in fact, hoping that that would also help with their achievement in those areas. So having a science teacher that has a keen interest and skills in that area, teaching fifth and sixth grade is really a good practice in education. And of course, that's a tested area, so that teacher then can focus on making sure that all of the benchmarks, the standards are being instructed, instruction, learning, and therefore that student achievement that is expected would end, should go up. Same thing with social studies, so the plan still remains that there would be a science teacher, a social studies teacher, two math teachers, and then everybody would teach their own, um, would teach reading, reading, um, instruction, reading, language arts. And again, the, the beauty of it is that, um, they can, they can do, um, they can do ability grouping, so for some units of study, um, by doing a pre-test, then the kids are divided into groups, and then they, they, that way they can be learning at the levels that they are at. And so that plan is still in place. The only thing that has changed, and the, and the reason why it's being discussed tonight and why this has been approached by your administration team again, is that, um, within the last week, we have had three or four additional fifth graders enroll into our district. So instead of looking at that number of thirty-one, that would be really doable, right now in the books, we have thirty-four. And so, um, as, and, and with an expectation that there are going to be more students coming into that grade level, then it's more doable to have the kids divided into those two, um, you know, into two homerooms for fifth grade, two homerooms for sixth grade, and still offer all of those really great educational benefits of kids being able to be, um, rotating a bit, just a bit, not, you know, they would still have a homeroom teacher, all of that would still be in place. And so this, um, your administration team know that it's an extra expense, but we are all together in this and believe that this is sound and that it's the way we should be moving, and we're asking for support from you as board members to hire another elementary teacher, um, and there has also been some movement though, I, I need to share that with you, so there's, there is movement of, um, the existing teachers going into different grade levels, and that's all being done, um, through our elementary principal and knowing the, the, um, the skills and the desires of our teachers at the elementary level. Questions?
What is our cutoff? I know that there's, you know, like, there's a, a state kind of guidance within, but I know that our district likes to maintain slow class sizes. What is our cutoff? Is it thirty-two, thirty-three in classroom? And thirty-one was enough, thirty-four wasn't, so?
Years and years ago, when we brought all-day kindergarten into our school district, the state also had recommendations, one to seventeen, and that is what our district tries to stay at, our ratio of one teacher to seventeen students in grades K, one, two, and three. And then when it comes to fourth and fifth grade, there isn't that, that recommendation from the state, because of course, that's where that cutoff is for students reading well by third grade, they're to, you know, already be on grade level and have those foundational skills in both reading and math to be successful as they, they go through the grades.
We have the results from our, um, MCAs and stuff in their fourth grade, like the class, and our parents have gotten the individuals, we have the grade wise.
Only preliminary at this point, the state has not released the MCA scores, and so we usually, um, as a team, we don't bring those scores to you until we know that they have been finalized and basically certified by the state.
What does that usually come out of, sorry?
Usually just before the new school year starts. We have not received them yet.
Is there another, uh, is that E D S? All those apps, I can't remember. There's another, there's another set of scores.
Well, you know, for our elementary, we use FAST, we use NWEAs, and we use MCAs, and, um, and those are also, um, listed in the, in our Read Well by Third Grade, that's where you will see, um, what those scores are for the MCAs, the preliminary are in there, um, for third grade, because the testing for MCAs doesn't start until third grade. And then we use the FAST and NWEA, um, for our younger students. And I should take that back, it's NWEA and FAST for third grade, second grade, and then it's FAST for our kindergarten, first grade.
Okay, I guess since you brought it up, I never knew that before. There's a recommendation for one teacher for seventeen students until third grade, right?
Through third grade.
Through third grade.
I thought there was something that was.
Well, I don't, I don't know if I misread it and jumped to thirty-one, but, I mean, I guess that's the point I would, I would, I would make, I mean, that, that's, I, I, I never knew that ratio before, that's quite a jump.
That's, well, that's a recommendation of what, of what the state, and that's, yeah, that's what we have followed in the past.
What would that make, Jen, for?
I, I had thought I heard that, uh, it was one to twenty-seven at, at some point.
For the older students, meaning like the fifth and sixth grade?
Like fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, I think it was like one to twenty-seven, but I didn't look it up myself.
We haven't, we haven't been following that, um, you know, it's just that one to seventeen, and again, it's been years and years of trying to support that. The other, the other piece is, you know, when, um, when looking at it being a little bit higher than that by putting in a full-time care educator, um, that's already been working with the students, already knows the students, the teacher basically selecting that person, that, that is educationally sound, it's not perfect. And, and that's why we've also gone through the, um, where we had two teachers, two actual teachers working with one of those larger classes for all of the math and reading. two actual teachers working with one of those larger classes for all of the math and reading instruction. And then, and then going with, you know, para, you know, para assistance when it comes to the other disciplines.
When was the last time that we had two teachers where that scenario played out?
With this group when they were third graders.
That was not due to a medical?
No, that was the plan to begin with. Because of the number of the students in that grade level. And so, and again, it was the two teachers rather than a teacher and a parent alongside because we felt it was important at that third grade level.
I guess my only question is, so if we hire another fifth grade teacher this year, are we going to be hiring a sixth grade teacher next year for this class too then? Or is this teacher gonna follow that class, you know what I mean? Or what happens to the fifth grade teacher when there's only twenty-two fourth graders going into fifth grade? You know what I mean?
Yep, it's all about that enrollment.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's where it, it gets so tricky because, you know, we can think that we've got the plan in place, we've got this X number of kids, and then the first day of school happens. And then either the numbers go down or the numbers go up. And so that's, that's where it's, it's, it's really tricky. But each year, each year, you know, I would come back to you from, from our administration viewpoint and share with you what we think would be the best, best solutions for, for our teachers, for the, the teaching and student ratios.
I mean, I guess the answer is, if, if there's no place to put the person, they would be, you know, laid off.
Well, and if I can just say something, I think it's incredibly beneficial for the fifth grade, for the next year's fifth grade class. It struggled pretty hard through the class with the pandemic and I think most of the school has. So if for one year we have to spend a little bit more money to give the kids a little bit more help and have a little bit more education and have a little bit more attention from that teacher, I think it's a good thing for any grade in our school because I'm a parent of that fourth grade class and I know that the kids struggled pretty hard through a lot of the things. There were some big adjustments from third grade to fourth grade, and there's going to be some more big adjustments from fourth grade to fifth grade. And I personally find this incredibly beneficial. Even if it's just for one year and we have to figure out a different plan for the following year just to help get them over that hurdle in dealing with the, all of the distractions that the pandemic had on students as a whole.
And it was even said by our own title teacher what the numbers are coming back as, as what kind of help they actually do need.
I'd also say with all of our staff and shortages, I highly doubt that there would not be any position for that.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I mean, if it was a simple answer, then there's nowhere to go.
Well, there's, there's, how do you know?
But, and that, that is correct, Mr. Chair, you know, it's, you know, a ULA, unrequested leave. Since we have, if we need, like, we have, we've been fortunate.
Okay, anyway. If someone would like to make a motion to have adding a fifth grade elementary teacher affected 2021 to 2022 school year, I'll move. We have a motion, move. Anyone want a second? We'll give it to Mr. Peterson. Any more discussion on that?
Which, that means that is there any anticipation with any other grades? It's going to be in this same predicament, were you? How many, how many other grades you feel is going to be this way?
I wish I would have brought my enrollment sheet, but we have another grade level coming up that, oh my gosh, right, twenty-seven? So we have one section of fourteen and one section of thirteen at this point in time. That's this year's first graders going into second grade, if I remember correctly. But again, our office has been really busy with, with new enrollments. And we won't know for sure until the doors open. But again, and that, we were being very diligent, respectful of the one to seventeen with our, with our younger grades. So, and we, we'll take a look at, well, we won't take a look at enrollments until, until September, but I can certainly bring that back to you next week if you'd like.
Sure.
Any more? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Contract for 2021, 2022 school year. Someone like to make a motion to accept the Strawbridge Studios Incorporated for School Photography Athletic Training Provided by Willia Health and Student Assurance Services. That's our catastrophic insurance. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on those?
Yes. Strawbridge, Strawbridge Studios, do we know, are they, how did we get, how did we get in touch with them?
They got in touch with us.
Okay.
Um, last year, we had three different school photography companies come in and, and talk with us about our school pictures. And we continued with Live Touch last year as one more year because we were, we were provided with some incentives and it did not work out well. And so we, we have, we decided, and this is, our building secretaries basically are the ones that, that actually facilitate school pictures. And the three of us, the, the two secretaries and I always work together with interviewing new potential vendors. So we called and let these two vendors that we had met with last year know that we were looking for a new school photo provider. And so we met with both of the other two companies during the last three, four weeks. And this is the company that, that we have chosen and we're very, very excited about having a new vendor and hoping that the prices, the main reason was the prices for family packages to, to make sure that, that is an affordable service for our kids and families. So we're pretty excited about it.
Yeah, that's my next question.
Yeah.
Do they offer anything different, a bit better prices than Live Touch offers?
They, at this point, because of coming up of COVID, the old, well, the one thing is, is that the composite, the, the photo of all of the kids in the classroom, that's part of every one of their packages. So you don't buy that separately anymore. And, yes, and the other is that you can buy just individual photos. So say you don't want a package at all, but you want two eight-by-tens, you know, for the two sets of grandparents or whatever, you can do that very easily without having to, you know, purchase a, a package. So, and there is the opportunity, you know, if, if, if we wanted to have spring photos, we can always add that on, but right now we're set for, we're set for fall. And the two dates are September twenty-ninth and September thirtieth for our school to have all of our photos taken. So we're very pleased and excited about this new vendor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on that?
The only other thing, Mr. Chair, is that the catastrophic insurance is going to be going up, but right now it says we have, we, that their prices, the rates will remain the same as last year. However, we have increased several benefits for the upcoming twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And most likely, we will have to pay more the following year. But that insurance really does protect so many different, different groups of kids whenever we're on field trips, whenever we have any community activities that are off school grounds. It protects all of our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders who are not considered legitimate Minnesota State High School League participants. So if something major were to happen, their families would be protected and individuals. So it's, I think it's a great service that we have brought to our, to our school.
I, I think in this day and age, people use that pretty much any sort of insurance going up. It's the way, way the world works. All right, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. The number eleven, QCOM annual report for 2020, 2021. Are we just going to go by what you sent us and?
Yep, and just, just real brief, there are five components. And so when you look at this, if you look at the, well, they show a blue on mine, that the five different parts, career advancement options, that's for the teacher leaders that are actually, they facilitate and they help with the peer observations with, with teacher evaluation. And so that's, that's one of the five parts. And the teacher leader positions remained intact during the last school year in spite of COVID. The second part is the job embedded professional development. And that's where all of our trainings for teachers, again, we were able to put that into place. And the focus that needed to happen this last year, we had to change gears a little bit, was technology. The teachers, we had to make sure that everyone was trained on Google Classroom, trained on how to deliver our, our instruction digitally instead of having students face-to-face in classes during the year. The third component is teacher evaluation, and we follow state statute. And our QCOM program is just basically supplements or, or basically supports the teacher evaluation process that's required by state statute. And again, we met, we met the goals for student reading. And our district has chosen reading as the QCOM, that area, that discipline for the last many years because we seem to struggle with those MCA scores district-wide. And so, and again, it's also, every single teacher is a teacher of reading. You can, you can have reading goals in every classroom. So it works very well for our district. The fourth part is the performance pay and alternative salary schedule. And we had one hundred percent participation as far as teachers receiving the district goal this year. And what we had to do, because there wasn't the testing last spring, we, we were not able to provide that stipend for anybody in the district. And what we said is we would carry it over to the next year and we'd pay double. And so this year, meeting the district goal of, of improvement academically in the area of reading, and it's by two schools, elementary and secondary, we were able to achieve those goals, which was excellent. And the last one is just the general program impact and recommendations. And it basically says that we have allowed our teaching staff to focus on personal professional growth, plan for learning opportunities, and we allow time to examine student needs and the level of achievement. Teachers are able to have a personal investment into the plan, and that's why it's successful as well.
Okay, we can get a motion to accept the QCOM annual report for 2020, 2021. I'll move. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, we have a second. Second. Thank you, Mr. Canings. Any other discussion on that? Okay, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. For twelve, the Open We Literacy Report/Plan, Read Well by Third Grade.
It's due to the state by July first, and that's where you have to go online and put in all of the success on the goals that we had last year and where we're at. And then you have to put the new plan together for the upcoming year. And so this, this plan will give you the summary of everything that happened in two thousand twenty, twenty-one. As, as I was reading through this, it's, I will share with you that it says, literacy plan approved by school board July two thousand twenty-one. We will have the actual date, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, will be inserted there. There are just a couple of areas, this is where you'll find that data. And this is the more current data for the two thousand twenty-one. So it's looking at where we're at right now and how we need to move forward. And, and then again, there's another, this is the plan. And then there's also a report of the success from the goals that were achieved from last year. And that's done online with the state. So no, no actual report can be presented from that. And you can see all the people that were involved in that actual report. So represented from each of the grade levels and so on.
So if we get a motion to accept the Open We Literacy Report/Plan, I'll move. Thank you, Mr. Smith, we have a second. If you can sign. Any other discussion on that? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Staff development, two percent set aside.
Share that in the, the notes to you. So it's all a goal, twenty-four yes votes, three no votes, and the budget would be twenty-five thousand for the upcoming year. And at waivers between twenty and twenty-five, just depending on where we're at with the actual budget at the end of the school year and kind of anticipating the needs of our staff for the following year. And so we've raised it back up to twenty-five thousand for the upcoming year.
Well, if somebody would like to make motion, click step for staff development, two percent set aside.
Do we want to keep that at two, sorry, um, do we want to keep that at two percent or do you want to have an actual figure?
It, well, it's, it's, that's the actual language of the two percent set aside. And then we set the amount.
They're waiving the two percent set aside. Because that's more like sixty, seventy thousand. They're waiving that and saying that twenty-five thousand is what they'd like this year.
Got it?
Yeah.
So someone would like to make that motion? I'll move. Thank you, Mr. Canings, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other discussion on that? All right, none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Non-action items, your job description, description, second reading, the maintenance custodian, and the district social worker.
There have been no changes in this from the time that you read the first, the first reading of it. And again, you know, as, as you read through it, if there's anything that pops out that you think needs to be incorporated, please let me know. And of course, I'm working with the maintenance department, you know, for, for that one and working with our admin team for the social worker since this is the first time in many, many years that we've had an actual social worker that's going to be working for our school. We're pretty excited about it.
Okay. Number fifteen, twenty twenty-one, academic all-star.
And that list was sent to you, and that's through nominations by the teachers. And there are guidelines that, that, that they follow in order to nominate. And kids can be nominated more than once. It's, and they are very limited. It cannot be any more than three kids per grade level. And it depends if they do, because it's supposed to be the top two percent of the students if they're going by straight academics. But then it can also be students that have like really overcome barriers into their education and done very, very well with that. It's also, you know, students that, that are, that, that have the character day in, day, day night or day out as far as being that really just great representative of Open We Public Schools.
And congratulations to those students that made that. Hadn't noticed the name, I heard very well, kindergarten, but anyway. Number sixteen, the draft of the social media policy.
I told you at the last meeting that I would work on this. And so this is my, my first draft then of this to help with, with the process. And so what I did was I used the four twenty-eight, the Fire Lake Savage. And then I used also, you know, the, the highlights that board members gave to me that they thought was really important, and then any notes that were passed this way also. And then looking at the Minnetoka Public Schools. And the Minnetoka one was basically their guidelines. It's not really the actual depth of the policy itself, but the guidelines that would come as kind of like procedures to go along with the policy. And then I believe Becky had shared this. And then, um, um, I believe Becky had shared this draft too, that was being used by many districts, and it follows the format of MSBA. And this one I felt was really over, was really, um, encompassing all of what we were, we were seeing in the other, in the other, um, policies as well. So I used this one primarily and fit everything else into it. Um, the only thing that I didn't do, and we can certainly do this if we'd like, is, um, those guidelines. You know, where you list them all out, you know, be transparent, use good judgment, respect your audience and your coworkers, be responsible. That could all be added as, as part of the guidelines to, to be an appendix or amendment to the, to the policy. But you know, quite frankly, I thought that it's pretty well, um, said that, um, what the expectations are. And the expectations, um, really spark in that, that, um, parts three and four. And so part four, you know, talking about the employees' postings, displays, communication, uh, communications must comply with all state and federal laws and any applicable district policies. Um, talking about recognizing the different, um, student groups and members wanting to have like Facebook pages. And we already have that process in our district of how they go about being able to add a, add a Facebook page on for their, um, for their sport or for their activity. And that way, um, with it being funneled through the district, then we can also help with those precautions that everything is being done, um, done with fidelity to, um, to the, to the laws and to our, our technology, our, our actual policy. And so, um, you know, it talks about, um, it doesn't really say what the discipline actions would be after, but it basically, it does really state, it does actually state on what people are responsible for. And so we can go right to saying, um, this, this area, um, let's see here, um, like letter E. Okay, so we can actually do that. And then the cross-reference, it shows the policies that would support this, being the harassment and violence, which is the employee, remember the four hundred series are employee policies, the five hundred series are our student policies. So it's harassment and violence, the employee-student relationships, um, and then our internet acceptable use and safety policy that governs everybody in our district with the form, um, being our employee acceptable use agreement. So, um, I don't know if you have comments about it right now or how you want to move forward with it.
I, I mean, I think we just, you know, let us bring this home and look at it, digest it.
Yep, yeah.
You know, we won't take any comment, I mean, unless somebody wants to make one, but I mean, it's, it's, you know, let's, you know, I, I, I didn't know, like, go through the whole thing. I thought maybe we'd get it, we'd get a chance to look at it, and then, then, then people can kind of go from there.
Yeah, it's just a draft. Yep, it's just a draft, and that's why I gave you a hard copy plus sent it to you electronically, so whichever you like. And we'll just talk about it again at the probably July meeting.
Okay. Negotiations meetings.
Okay, they're set. They're set for next Monday at five o'clock for OE eight and Tuesday at six o'clock for OESTA, here in the boardroom. The first meeting should be, um, I would say maybe an hour in length. Um, and it's where, um, speaking to the ground rules. And then both union presidents have been, um, approached with them bringing their, um, bringing their proposal. Their proposal will be presented to us. And then the next meeting, which would be in July, because the building is shut down for two full weeks, so nothing can happen in here. Then the next meeting in July, then we would have a counterproposal, um, for that, for their proposals, and we would also, um, actually share our district proposal with them. So, um, there isn't a, there isn't a whole lot that we need to prepare for, for these first meetings. And like I said, they should be relatively short. But we've got a lot of work to do as two teams also. Um, and so, um, if you have some, some time that you want to, you know, throw out, that we could work, um, next week, um, even this week, and having, um, team meetings, we sure can. Um, or it would have to happen, you know, when the school isn't shut down before we would have that, that next July meeting. And the preparations we've taken here in the district, um, all the heads of departments have gone through the, um, the actual union, um, master agreements. And they have pointed out areas that, that they have had some issues with, that they want language to be, um, introduced or to be revised a bit, to make it a little bit clearer. Um, and, and so we've got that, um, work that has been done, um, in May, the, of this, this past year. So that's where we're at district-wide, and of course, you have your binders. But one binder was turned in to me, so if somebody is missing a negotiations binder, um, I have one for you, Nathan. So, discussion on, on your part, what you'd like to, to do.
You know, the last, last negotiation, I remember we met a half hour before we came into the big group. Is that something?
It's supposed to be longer.
Okay.
It ended up being a half hour, a lot of the time, yeah.
And my first team doing the, I'm gonna need more time. I've also, I believe that a new member on, on our team, that we're gonna need, we're gonna need a little bit more time, we're gonna need more time than a half hour.
You're gonna need more, you're gonna need probably like a two-hour session, and it's not going to be on the same night that you meet with the, with the union group.
I, I realize that, I'm just saying, like, when you're doing the scheduling, allow plenty of, look under where our, please. That's okay, it's my teammate.
Yep, absolutely. I've always got pretty.
I can't, I can't be slammed, but yeah, I can't do that. I don't want to do that.
I, I agree. I guess, I don't know, for, for, I mean, unless someone on my team wants me, but I, I think this could be, I think we wait for you go through the first meeting and, and, and.
I mean, I mean, Monday, I know.
Well, then at least you know what we're gonna talk about, you know, you know, you know, a little bit more anyways.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have any time to speak.
Yeah, no, it's okay, no.
Okay.
Are you guys okay with waiting the first one?
Yeah.
Okay, so no pre-meetings, just the meeting that's already scheduled for, um, meeting with, with the unions. And then we, then we'll, we can plan our meetings thereafter.
Okay. You good with that one? Ray King, board goals review.
Okay, so what I, what I have done, what we've done so far is, um, you already saved the, the goal sheet, and to see which of these we want to, what we're gonna do is one year, first year first, and then we're gonna build on, you know, the years two through five after. But really, you know, when we actually take the time, and we're gonna need a lot more time than just, you know, five or ten minutes, need to actually look at what of this you want to have addressed in the first year. And then, um, to expand on that, look at all of the mission statements and the belief statements. So then I presented this to you, the district vision, the mission statements, and then the belief statements. And we have to just review those to see, well, have they stood the test of time? You've heard me say that phrase before. Or do you think there need to be some deletions and some additions? And so that process needs to happen also as we move forward. And then, um, at the last meeting, you had also, um, shared that you really liked what we had done with InGenza. And so this is the, the document that I sent to you electronically. And what it was is, um, InGenza worked, they actually, um, helped us through that process. They started with our academic vision, so this is our school district vision that we've had for probably twelve years. And so, and then they rebuilt here together, you guys built the, um, facilities vision, a welcoming, safe and secure environment that creates a sense of pride for our students and community to grow and learn together in an innovative, flexible learning space. So then again, taking that and looking into the future. Okay, so what part of what we've been working with, with InGenza and Ellers is happening right now during this first year? What's going to be happening during the second year, the third, fourth, and fifth year? So in five years from now, you know, what, what do we want to have accomplished in the district? And again, I'm just remembering that, um, your two primary, um, jobs, um, responsibilities are fiscal responsibility for the finances of the district and student achievement. And everything that we do in our school needs to funnel into those two areas. So that's all, I wanted just to refresh your memory. And then, um, when, when do you think we can actually have a meeting where we bring this kind of like homework to the table and actually carve out that first year? Because we need to have that first year in place, um, you know, before it's summer end, so that, um, everything that our teachers and our staff development, our professional development, everything that we do again is guided underneath of what you as board members want to happen in our district.
I've got a question.
Mm-hmm.
Are we gonna do any type of retreats or anything? We really haven't done any of that, are we gonna be doing like, um, barbecue, eat, and do, could we do our goals at that point? A little bit more of a relaxed, creative environment?
Three, four. Yeah, I'm trying to work. That's probably, I mean, you're kind of, yeah, me too, I'm trying to tell everybody. I mean, I don't know, what, what, what do you want from a little bit, is that an actual date of when we're gonna do it?
Well, no, just again, to keep everything fresh in our minds so that it doesn't get forgotten.
Okay.
Okay, so keeping it fresh, and as we're going through the, the negotiations process, we know that that is, you know, when you think of, um, highest priority, highest priority for, for we as a team is the negotiations process. The, the goals, that's, um, basically can come after negotiations. If we can finish our negotiations by the end of July, which would be just, you know, awesome. Um, then we can maybe devote, um, some of that time in August, as I shared, that, um, to actually have the first, the first year really itemized out, and then looking at, um, you know, a skeleton type, bare bones for the, the next year. So we have direction of, of where we're going. That's all about that strategic plan. And, and quite frankly, I have never experienced a strategic plan in this district, even when I was on the board back in the nineteen nineties. And so it's time, and I think that's what, what you were hoping, that we would actually have this vision and move forward also. Our strategic plans in the past have been just kind of used. So, um, just keeping it fresh, just to cherish it, so that we all know that we've got to work on this together. Um, and then Genza and Ellers, everything that we heard tonight, that fits right into that strategic plan. You know, a referendum or a bond election, right into the, the plan, and we put it into those years of what we want to have, have happen.
Okay. Anybody got anything more on that? Okay, number nineteen, superintendent evaluation. I had that put on there for tonight, um, just to talk about what kind of process we wanna move going forward. Do we wanna use the same, uh, system we used last year? Do we, do you guys want me to research some other, um, evaluations, uh, setups? Or, or how do you guys wanna go about doing this? Basically what I have it on here for tonight.
How, how often we do it?
Well, there's, there's different, there's different reviews to, to you. You know, in the past, we, we used the, uh, you know, pretty, um, basic one before. Uh, the last couple of years, we, we've gone a little more in depth. Uh, I mean, but there's one way more in depth than that, I mean, you know, I, I just wanna know what, you guys want me to see what's out there and bring stuff back there for the next meeting?
Yeah, I like that idea.
Can we do some research also?
No, absolutely.
Figure out, okay.
Sure, I believe it's called the last.
Yeah.
Or.
Reno did it the last time.
Yeah, I'd love to help that guy out some things.
Yeah, absolutely do your own, you know, but, but, you know, I'm, I'm open to do what, whatever you guys wanna do. You know, whichever one you wanna do. Really in depth, in that part, and kinda, you know, I mean, it's, it's kinda all ways, you know? There's, there's a bunch of different ones to go from, so. But that's all that's on there for tonight, so we can talk about it and have somewhere to go from there, so.
I personally have used one from last year that I would compare him to third.
Is that what you emailed up?
I, I, I went out to MSBA for you to see what was there for superintendent evaluations. This is a brand-new forty-two-page document that was, um, drafted and put into their library July of two thousand twenty. So it was after you had already started the process with me.
Yeah.
So I emailed this to you, and then I also emailed you, this is what they have on their, their website, and this is a sample periodic superintendent evaluation. Um, and it talks about, the first page is, um, a resolution to go into that process, and then it has the actual document. And I believe this one, Reno, is pretty close to the one that was used last year. But then I also took one more step, and I, um, especially with Nathan being a brand-new school board number two, I printed this for you as a guide. This is the calendar of when all of these things should happen. So if you go to June, it says, approve and adopt initial revenue and expenditure budget for the coming year, which you're going to be doing next week, and you already reviewed the, um, the changes from last week. Compare, um, complete superintendent evaluation if appropriate. And so, um, an annual one does not have to be done every year. I mean, it doesn't have to be annual, it's, if you believe it needs to happen. I know in our district, what we've done is for sure, there's an evaluation that is done in the negotiations years. So there was an evaluation done last year, and, um, and there, I, my contract goes through this next year. Um, and I'm just sharing that with you, I'm not saying that I'm opposed or not opposed, but it doesn't have to be done annually. Okay, and then if you flip over to July, um, July, okay.
Well, we're already not gonna make June, because we're not gonna complete it in June.
Okay, yep, um, there's, on this side, it's the, um, it's the school board, annual, there we go. Set date for annual board self-evaluation, and that's, um, on the MSBA's July calendar. So, and I, and I don't know for sure when the last time an evaluation, a self-evaluation was done with the board either.
Well, the superintendent's one ain't gonna get done in June, I doubt the, so, I doubt the school board one will be done in July.
But again, these can be placed into that strategic plan too. So, but I thought that these documents would be something that you could look at, and that's my contribution.
Okay. We have another. I mean, I have just one other, and it, it's early, but I'll, I'll remind you again at the next meeting. So get ready. July, the last week of July, I'll be gone. Like, the last week of July and the first week of August.
Second business.
I'm on vacation, yeah. So I just want everyone to be, you know, I, I'll, I'll bring it up again, you know, in July's first meeting. Just wanted everyone to be ready, you to be ready. So, that's all I got. Anybody else? Okay, if we can get, uh, number twenty-one, please.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pyne. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion passes.
Now. I keep typing that word, can I just say that?
Yeah, I'll just say that.
That's why you don't have.